Good morning. Um, as I have done sometimes in the past, I read you a poem rather than say a prayer. Well, this is a prayer. It's in the form of a poem. And I believe whether you're a Christian, whether you're Jewish, whether you're believing Islam or whatever, I believe if you listen to this, it will speak to your heart. So God, when I have food this Thanksgiving Day, help me-
To remember the hungry. For the privilege I have to work, help me to remember the jobless. I have a home, help me to remember those who have no home at all. And when I am without pain, help me to remember those who suffer. And remembering, help me to destroy my complacency, bestir my compassion, and be concerned enough to help by word and indeed for those who cry out for what I take for granted every day. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here on our last board meeting before Thanksgiving Day. And again, a very good wish for everyone to have a wonderful and blessed Thanksgiving and a safe one as well. The first order we have on business today is the reorganization of the board and election of a new chair. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, nominate Sarah Commander as chair.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further board discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the position of vice chair. Do I have any nominations for that?
Move for Cecilia Jonesby, vice chair.
Sarah?
I think Cindy seconded.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. All right. And before we get started, Mr. Bill, I think all of us as here that serve with you on a daily basis, our staff and the people that we serve, want to thank you for your service. I especially appreciate what you have brought to this board and as chairman. And I've learned a lot and I hope to continue what you have started. So on behalf of your fellow board members, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you're going to play musical chairs now.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, my fellow commissioners, and all the best to you during the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will call the meeting. Do we have any additions or deletions, Mr.?
Madam Chair, thank you. We would recommend and ask you to remove out from Tab C, Item 1F, the pre-fee proposal for the windshield fill for the production of the design and build package for the new transfer station. We're going to ask that we go out for RFQ on that project and we will have that back here at the next board meeting for your approval. Which one was it? Tab C, Item 1F, under administration.
The transfer station?
Yes, ma'am.
It's three from the bottom. Got it. Okay, are there any other?
No, ma'am. Motion to approve additions and deletions.
Second. All right, we have a motion, second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have public comment at this time? Anybody that-
First, we got to approve the agenda.
Thank you, yes. This is my first time, so help me, help me on here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Give a motion in a second.
In a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, then, public comment, is there anyone that would like to comment on an item on the agenda at this time? Only on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Wait, where are the ones on the copiers?
They're moved under admin.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to discuss.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Madam Chair, I'm thinking the agenda, they didn't have waste management in that heading, or is it separated? I don't see it separated.
It is. It's Page 3, second.
Page 3.
Okay.
Right there.
Very well.
We have the Waste Management, EAL, we need a motion to approve. So move.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Madam Chair, I need to declare my conflict of interest and I filed a appropriate form with the clerk.
All right, we have a motion, second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The first item on our agenda is the commission, board, and committee assignments. You have in your package a list of those where each of you are now currently serving. It may be easier to start each of you stating which ones you would like to continue or not continue and move from there. Madam Chair, however you prefer to handle it.
You just opened a can of worms. Okay, we've all looked at them and know what boards we're on. Is there anybody that wants to-
Yes.
-move around?
Yes, I would like to, I think, after serving on the Tourist Development Council for, I can't remember how long, three years maybe, I've learned a lot and I think that this is a board that possibly we should rotate. And so I would like to come off of that board at this time and, you know, whoever else would like to take that on. I think it's just a, it's a very good experience and learning about what happens at the TDC and what goes into that. So I would like to, and it's not quarterly, it's every other month now, so I think it's on the first Tuesday of every month. So I would like to come off of that and whoever else wants, is interested, to be honest.
Have anybody who's interested, ladies and gentlemen?
Well, first option should go to one of you that has, you know, that's your, part of your district is in it, but if you're not, if you don't, you know, if you've got too much responsibility or you want me to do it, I'll be happy to do it, with the caveat that someone would take my regional, my tri-county, my tri-county position.
Who wants to cut a deal?
No, 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 the council on aging, excuse me, council on aging. I do many others, but I'll be-
I'll take council on aging.
Okay.
Because they're right up here.
That's great, thank you.
And I see, I understand you're saying, but to me, the TDC is about the whole county. I mean, I know our districts-
It is, and that's why I said that we should really rotate it, because it really is the entire county and it is a great learning, it's a great learning experience about what goes on.
I'd be happy to do it, okay?
And I'd be glad to take then council on aging. But undermine, one of the things that I give up is the chairmanship of the EDA. That goes to you.
Thank you. All right, I'm happy with mine. I'm on the Moakless Walt Intercation, I'm on the Public Safety Coordinating Council, which I don't think I've ever served. Regional Utility, Small County Coalition, Transportation Disadvantaged Communities for a Lifetime, I'm fine with all of mine.
So am I.
So, all right. I need to, do we need to vote on these?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Roll it up, roll it onto mine, once again. Let me just see something if it's in there.
You better move fast.
I'm going to make a motion now.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Those amendments would be that Mr. Jones at the TDC, Commissioner Enfield on the Council on Aging, and the chairman, Commissioner Commander, serve on the EDA board.
Okay, yes, that's it.
Just clear.
All right, we have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, ma'am. Next item for your consideration, requesting your approval, are the meeting procedures, which we do on an annual basis. What you see before you are the procedures that we utilized for some time. However, I believe Mr. Davis has included some additional comments regarding public dissipation that were part and parcel here and there, that have been accumulated to bring into this. There's not, we don't believe there's any change from our current procedures, it's just bringing them into our package so that we're clear on what those are.
I've read them, they're, to me, they're very standard, actually, in a way, a lot more lenient than some of the boards that I serve on, so I'm fine with it.
Can we, I know that, could we, if we discuss them here, could we also discuss them at the December 8th meeting, just to get public input from both sides of the county? I'd like to see that, I'm good with them, but I would also like to see them on the agenda at the December 8th meeting, just in case we have, you know, any input into them. I think that's, I think that would be a good idea, because there's, there may be some input.
Well, and I don't, well, I guess I do disagree with you, because first of all, we've been using these for a while and they are our procedures. And I certainly don't mind hearing from somebody, but I think we should, in my opinion, should go ahead and adopt them, and then if anybody wants to come talk to us about making a change, they can certainly agree to contact any commissioner.
Well, I think that's, that's good, but I think there's nothing like having something in an open public hearing to talk about, especially the public input section, not that I'm, again, not that I'm for changing anything, but I just think that in transparency in government and that it's much better that these things are done in the public. And so that is why I would like to see, see them discussed again at the December 8th meeting, because I think this meeting, right before Thanksgiving, I think, you know, there's, there's probably not a lot of people in town, so I would just like to ask that it be that we discuss them here, if we have any changes, but that we also discuss them at the December 8th meeting, and that, that would be the meeting that we would formally adopt them. But take public comment, I mean, I don't think that, why meet in private and then have to bring it back? I mean, it's on the agenda, let's talk about it.
You know, might be a good idea. I got an email from a constituent and I think if someone wants to talk to us, it's their responsibility to make an appointment, and if they're still needing to talk, I think they should make an appointment with Commissioner Commander, and then if she sees fit, then I think that would be a great idea to put it on the agenda and, you know.
Well, it is on the agenda, and, yeah, yeah, and that's the thing. It is on the agenda today, and I just am requesting that it also be on the agenda on December 8th, in the spirit of transparency.
And I think Commissioner Commander would have a great, she could do that if she's so seen to feel that it's needed.
Right, well, and if she doesn't, then I'll put it underneath my name at the, at the 8th meeting, and we can discuss it under my name.
Okay.
So it's depending, you know, I think in the spirit of transparency, I think that what would be wrong with hearing from the people on the 8th about it? I just, I don't see anything that would need the chairman's, you know, approval of that. I mean, if she doesn't want to put it on there, I'll put it under my name.
Madam Chair, there's, I see a couple people in the audience that I've received some correspondence from concerning this topic. If you, Commissioner Meadows, if you want to take public comment at this time, Mr. Hudson and Ms. Banks, if y'all want to speak to it at this time, might be a good time to do it.
You're fine? Or you're waving your hand or?
For the record, my name is Bob Hudson, H U D S O N. I'm the executive director of the Walton County Taxpayers Association. I'd like to go back to June 10th of this year, when Ms. Banks, who is the president of the Walton County Taxpayers Association, asked the chair of the BCC to facilitate a meeting between the Walton County Taxpayers Association, South Walton Community Council, and any other parties that might be interested in trying to improve citizen input into Board of County Commissioner meetings. There were a lot of discussion between Ms. Commander, you had some suggestions, Ms. Jones, you had some suggestions at that point in time, and we left that day thinking we were going to schedule a meeting. The only way you can schedule a meeting is ask to have a meeting, and that's what we did. I must say that right after that, I had some health issues, and Mr. Jones and I talked about that, and we kind of postponed a meeting or scheduling a meeting for a month or two while I had some surgery and things of that nature. I then expressed to him that I was back in the saddle, I guess you could say, and asked that we find a time, send us two or three dates. I then was at the last BCC meeting and reminded that we had made that request and that had not been done. Our issue is not to tell you how to run your meetings. Our issue is, we believe the public has a right to be involved in this process, that the public should understand what they can say, what they can do, when they say it, when they do it. All done in what I would hopefully say would be an atmosphere of cooperation between the public and you, the decision makers here in Walton County. Mutual respect on both sides, we believe, a mission that we could take on is to, once we had a clear understanding of the rules and procedures, that we could help educate, because a lot of the people that come before you and speak to you are members of our organization or the South Walton Community Council or all of those others. So our request would be the same, that we have a meeting, we didn't say meet just with us, we said meet with any interested parties. We believe that the best way to do that is at a workshop, and we would ask that you, you have policies and procedures that are in place, but I don't see any need in adopting some new ones that we believe there's some, that's one thing we want to get rid of, but okay, if I'm boring you, that's fine. I am just reminding you that when you say the constituent has the responsibility of making the appointment, we tried two times, and at least.
And I wasn't aware you were having health issues, I'm sorry for that, so.
Well, too much sun, had a little bit of, have a new nose, if you haven't noticed.
I have not.
And thank you. But that would be our request at this point in time, that we keep what we have and not adopt anything new until we could have a workshop, because we think we can improve the process, and with your help and with your cooperation. Thank you.
Well, one of the things on here, too, I noticed, the next thing is a special meeting on the 8th at 3:00, appoint members to serve on boards. That's not going to take an hour, I hope. So couldn't we have 3:00 to 3:30 would be a workshop on, you know, our meeting procedures, and then 3:30 to 4:00, we could do the boards? That would be my motion.
Second, or discussion, if there's any more discussion.
I think we have to remember, we work for them, we work for them. We need to listen to them, we need to give them ample time for input. I have actually been told by some constituents that they've called commissioners to have a meeting, and those commissioners will not meet with them, you know, for whatever reason. So, and that's been told to me more than, more than once, about multiple commissioners. So I think that, you know, there's a lot going on in the county and we've got to have open door policy, and we have to listen, even if we don't agree with what people are saying. So my motion would be, and as he seconded it, is to continue the meeting to a workshop, the meeting procedures to a workshop on December 8th, 3:00 to 3:30, and then do the boards from 3:30 to 4:00.
DeeDee, I noticed you shaking your head, is that, do you, it can be done? Okay.
I guess my, I guess my only comment would be, you know, we've been operating under these, and I know you don't like the three minutes, but what do you want? Everybody to have 30, 40 minutes, and we're going to have to start meeting at midnight and going to midnight? There has to be some time set. This is a business meeting for the people of Walton County. We are the executive board, if we were Walmart, and the people have elected us to serve in that capacity and run this county in the best way possible, and also these meetings. As I say, I have read these, I think they're a good start, I think if we was, use them a while. If there are any changes that need to be made, then I will be glad to meet with Ms. Banks and talk with her, I'll be more than glad to, she is the president of that organization. So that's the way I feel, that we need to move forward. And these are really standard, I mean, they're just standard meeting procedures.
Well, they may be standard to us, but they're not to, you know, the citizens. I mean, the citizens have the right to come and speak on them, even though we say that they may not change. What is the problem with moving it to a workshop to listen to the people? I just don't get that. I just don't get that. I mean, if we have to stay till midnight, that's our job, we stay till midnight, you know, but you've got to listen to the people.
And I don't see the issue as being listening to the people or not listening to the people. I see the issue as being, how do we want to approach this? And I really would like for Ms. Banks, Community Council, a member, South Walton, small business people, if they want to, you know, whoever wants to talk about this, to meet with Commissioner Commander, and then let her bring her recommendations. There might be a good idea that she wants to bring to the table, but I think it should be her, you know, her responsibility to listen and then make her recommendations to the, to the commission.
But I think, though, that people in the audience may not be a member of some of those groups. Why limit it to those groups? Why not open it up to the public and take public comment on it? I may think differently than Commissioner Commander. I may think that that's, I want to hear what they have to say in a public forum, and I want to hear from everybody, not just the groups.
So, Commissioner Commander, would you be willing to meet with anyone that's interested in this issue?
Yes, ma'am.
And then they have to drive to the funiac? No, no.
Ma'am, I have office hours in, in South Walton as well, and I will be glad to go down to South Walton when somebody calls me and asks me to go.
And I would be more than happy to hear anyone. I have never refused to meet with anyone, so I would be happy to listen as well as being, you know, another commissioner, commissioner's ears, and I'm sure these gentlemen would be too.
Why have, why make people run all over the county to talk to individual commissioners when they can come to one public meeting and express their opinion? I don't, I think that, you know, the citizens deserve, I mean, it's a public meeting, that's what we're here for. They don't need to run all over the county. Some commissioners' offices are an hour away, they don't need to run all over the county when we have a public hearing. I mean, it's just absurd.
Right, and I often drive to South Walton to meet with constituents. I've gone there quite a few times, so, anyway, I call the question.
You may do that, but, but some others don't.
Question. We call for the question. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor? Or what's the motion again?
To hold a workshop on the 8th at 3:30.
To hear from the public on 3:00, to hear on meeting procedures, that we can adopt them at that time, whatever we want to do. And then 3:30 would be appoint the board member to talk about the volunteers.
Yeah, and Commissioners, if, if we're going to go ahead and try to adopt them that day, it can't be a workshop, it'd need to be a special meeting.
Well, we could move it to the special, to the-
Either one, I just didn't want you to schedule a workshop.
We could workshop it and then, and be it on the agenda.
Got it. The question has been called for. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion dies. All right, do we have another motion of any kind?
I move that anyone interested, well, let's see, I move, what I would like for, let me just tell you what I would like to see, and then we can make a motion. I would like for anyone interested, I would love to hear what your concerns are concerning this, so I would suggest that they call the commissioners, meet with Commissioner Commander, and then Commissioner Commander bring to the board any, any discussion of changes that has come from the public. And then we can add in, you know, I have, I like this idea of doing this, this, and-
We can always alter them.
Absolutely. And I think it's important, I want to hear from the public, I just feel like this is a better way of doing it.
And I'll announce to the public that I will put it underneath my name at the, on the December 8th agenda, so if you'll go ahead and do that, DeeDee, so that the public can provide input under my name at, at the December 8th meeting.
So that would be anyone that hasn't called us, Commissioner Meadows will have it under her name, and you can do additional comments.
And you can even, you can even, even if you've called somebody, you can even speak too. We're not going to limit people's First Amendment rights.
To move this along, motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seen any discussion from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
All right, we have one now. Mr. Jones?
Next item is regarding the scheduling of a special meeting on December 8th to discuss and make appointments to volunteer boards. Your recommendation was at 3:00, if you want to-
I think it needs to be moved to 3:30, I mean, you know, is it going to take an hour? I don't think so. Hope not.
Is whatever.
Has it been advertised yet? No, of course it hasn't.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I hope went through every one of these volunteer boards that we have out there. There's approximately 86 or 87 actual board positions with all of them. Forty-seven of them are either their term has expired or they're vacant. So it's going to take some time, I would think, to go through that whole litany of list and personnel and take it from there, as far as either reappointing, opening it up for others that may be interested in a particular position on one of these boards, and afford them the opportunity also to maybe apply.
Well, when I went over this with DeeDee, there were only about five seats that were recommended changes, because the people either wanted to continue to serve or they didn't want to serve, and so from what I remember, there were about five positions that were, that could be filled, because everybody else wants to continue. So, I mean, you know, if y'all want to come down there at 3:00, hang around for an hour, that's fine with me, but I'm just saying that I think that it's going to be pretty straightforward, you know, you don't get a lot of volunteers, you know, it's not paid for, you don't get a lot of volunteers, there's not a lot of people, there's a lot of people who want to continue what they're doing for consistency purposes and to serve on the board, so, you know, if you want to come at 3:00, hey, that's fine with me.
I'll bring plenty of Christmas cookies, Mrs. Jones.
You do that.
I move that we have the special meeting at 3:00. Do we have a motion?
No, not yet, no.
I motion that we-
You do that.
I move that we have the special meeting at three. Do we have a motion?
No, not yet, no.
I motion that we have the special meeting at three o'clock to discuss volunteer boards.
All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Kind of confused here. Because I thought we already had something dealing with a three o'clock workshop or a special meeting concerning... No, that didn't go, huh? All right, so be it.
Now, remember you voted against it?
Second.
No, he's talking about some different...
The three o'clock, yeah.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on the board?
Madam Chair, just for clarity, and maybe Mr. Davis, the motion was to make it, have a special meeting so we could take action. Have we, have we provided appropriate notice or have time to do that? Okay, okay, just for clarity.
We have a, is there any one in the audience that would like to speak to this issue?
Have we notified everybody that's on these boards and asked them if they want to serve again? We have? Okay, thanks.
Also advertise for volunteers that wish to serve on any of these boards.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item is some updates and recommendations on properties that we've been reviewing and looking at on behalf of the board. We'll start with the We Care parcel. If you recall, that's a almost forty-five acre parcel adjacent to the We Care Park. We have an appraisal back on that property. If, if this board's wishes that we continue, we'll begin the negotiation process with the owners. I don't know if we need any formal action, but just nods to...
Do you have an appraisal back?
Yes, ma'am.
And where would the money come from?
We haven't identified it yet, but if we get to the point, we will make a recommendation of where it will come from.
I, I think this parcel would be really good future use, maybe might be a league where, you know, the travel ball comes in or, it's just, it's just a great addition to the We Care Park. So I would like for us to continue negotiations.
Is there wetlands on there?
There's a, a line, a power line through it, I'm not sure about wetlands.
No, no wetlands?
Gas.
A gas line?
Can you play ball on top of the gas line?
We do We Care at home, yes.
So we'd have to look into that, see if it'd be even feasible to...
So he's going to go forward?
Well, the gas line goes right now all the way through We Care Park. They just happen to put the path on top of it.
All right. So is it the consensus that we want to go forward?
I do.
Yeah.
We'll begin that process. Next item is the inlet beach parcel. In, in your comments there, we provided that it is a bit complicated because it's a, it's about a half acre parcel directly on the beach. The county owns the parcel to the east and easement, I mean, easement to the east and the parcel to the west. This particular parcel is encumbered on the north and east boundaries by thirty-three foot access easements in favor of the county. The appraisals that we initially did did not take those easements into consideration and they were substantial appraisals. The appraisers went back and determined that the easements did encumber the property and prohibited any building from taking place, which substantially reduced their appraisals below the asking price. However, statutes allow that if you find it in the best interest of the county to spend above an appraised value, you can do that with a super majority. The asking price for this parcel is three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We firmly believe that that's the only opportunity we're going to have to spend three hundred and forty thousand dollars for a half acre piece of beach property. So we fully believe that it would be in the best interest of the county to acquire this property with no specific plans for developing it at this point, other than to have additional public beach. We have access to it and it actually helps us open up the parcel to the west, which is another half acre piece. So I think it, we would recommend your approval. Again, it will take a super majority to approve it because it is above the appraised values.
Is that a house right in front of it? That, yeah, where you're...
It's a condo, I think. It's a condo, yeah. Yeah.
Would TD, TDC be administering this person?
Yes, that would be our recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion among the board? Seeing none, is there any discussion from the public? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So you got, you got unanimous vote on a thing?
Yes.
Requiring a super majority, okay.
Thank you, commissioners. Next item is the Helen McCall parcel. We had the discussion recently about the potential of using this. We did obtain one appraisal. That appraisal was substantially less than the asking price, actually about one-fourth of the asking price. So if we wish to move forward, we will need to obtain another appraisal. So we're just asking for aggression from the board if you want us to pursue that option and acquire another appraisal. But before we spend that money, we wanted you to see the disparity of what the first appraisal came in and what the asking price is.
Is the owner firm on that? Is there any room, possible room for negotiations?
We're... That's their, that's their asking price. We've not gone back to ask them if they were interested in coming down from that.
If we're pretty confident the next appraisal's going to be somewhat close to the four hundred thousand, and they're not willing to cut it seven hundred thousand to get down there close to it, I don't know if it's worthy of spending the money for it.
Is that a retention fund right there?
In the rear?
Yeah.
That's ours, yeah. That's ours. I think what we ought to do is, is maybe go back to them and say, this is, you know, here's, this is what we came up with in the appraisal. You know, is there any room?
Okay.
And, and then not do another appraisal, because like Mr. Chapman said, you know, it's probably going to come in somewhere in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Let's see what he says.
See what you think about it.
Yeah, see what he says.
At the same time, asking parks to tell us what they think we can put on this property. You know, if there's wetlands and all, find out, parks give us an idea.
There's, there's about two, two and a half acres of wetlands on it.
And it's, and it's in the, it's in the front, right, or the back? Is it in the back or the front?
Where's the wetlands? Back here?
Yeah, we've had, we've had an environmental look at it. We've, we've got the maps on that. It, it would probably be more ball fields. I mean, that's, you know, that's the big, the big need is just ball fields, whether it's football, soccer, or softball, or t-ball, or whatever. It's more ball fields.
How many ball fields would you get on there?
And parking.
Yeah.
And parking. So you can see the ball fields that are there now. You can see, you know, what, what could probably be put on there. But let, let's see if they'll work with us and, you know, if they don't, then...
Is there any more land around there? I mean, I...
It's all wetlands or state park. That's the problem. South is state park, which is, you know, undoable. And to the east is, there is some land, but it's, it's development land is probably more expensive. There's just, yeah.
Is it the consensus of the board that we, we try to negotiate?
Okay, see if he's willing to move on.
Yes, 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 yes.
And the last parcel is the San Roy property. At the last BCC meeting, we gave you a report and you asked us to go back and have some discussions with the owner as to their willingness to negotiate a, a lower price. We've had those discussions. There is the possibility of that price coming down some. We're not sure to what extent. The owner is asking for some concessions on behalf of the county on an easement that runs across the property. So just giving you a report back that we are in those discussions and certainly not prepared to make any recommendation today. We just want to let you know that we were moving that process forward.
Very good. Any, any more questions? Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item, regarding, regarding a request at the landfill in order to link in compliance with our operating permit, we are in need of installing some additional vents for the landfill gases. We, if you may recall, we installed some earlier in this year that helped alleviate the problem, but there's still some gas detected that we're going to have to install some further vents. This is a request for you to approve a task work order for Preble Ridge in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety cents to begin that process of getting those remediation vents installed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion among the board? Seeing none, does anyone in the public like to comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. They see number F has been removed.
Next up.
G?
Next three items, commissioners, I think it's three of them, are regarding leases with copy products for copy machines. It's come to our attention that we've not gone out for RFP for these services for some time, that it might be in our best interest to at least look and see that these folks are providing the best service at the best price. So we're comfortable with the service we are getting. We think they're at a reasonable price, but we would certainly entertain the idea of issuing RFP for these services if the board would think that would...
It's been a number of years since there's been any kind of, of competitive quotes, and I think it would, as long as we're comparing apples to apples and not getting one that's, that's high on, on pricing, copy counts versus leases versus maintenance. But I would think it would behoove all of the county to see if we can get the best price with quality, with a quality machine that's going to give us what we need. So I would like to make a motion that we go out for an RFP, making sure that what we're asking for compares apples to apples and that we then bring it back to the board for a decision.
Is that just for these or for all copiers in the county?
Well, I think it'd probably be for all, but we've signed a few leases in the past few months, so those would continue until expiration. But at least for, we've got three here and maybe more coming down the pike as we go forward. Now, we could, whatever's coming down in the immediate future, let's, let's get a, an RFP out for them.
If we do a bundle, then it, we could get a better price. So I second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion among the board? Does anyone in the audience have any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jones?
Okay, that takes care of items G, G, H, and I.
Okay.
So we will move to first item on the Public Works. This request is to approve to advertise for construction bids on County Road 181C from State Road 81 to Holmes County Line. This is funded by a small county's outreach program. See the history of how we're here today. So we would recommend your approval to move this to, move to advertise for construction bids.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion among the board? Seeing none, anyone in the audience? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, next item is your request to allow staff to advertise for bids for locating and marking services for underground utilities. CSI, which is now Southland Utilities, currently provides that service. Our contract will expire with them early next year and we would like to competitively bid that process again.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion among the board?
Yeah, just a question. Locating and marking underground utilities, is that with just all our road projects or which proj, what projects is that?
Call before you dig. Anywhere we're going to disturb the ground, we have to get clearance from underground utilities to ensure we don't...
Does that have anything to do with regional utilities?
Only that they would locate, this company would certainly locate regionals infrastructure in the areas that we would be impacting.
Okay, okay. So regional, we don't call regional out and say, where are your utilities?
I mean, we may on occasion, but I think typically we, we use this one service.
Okay.
But I'm certainly, certain regional would most rather come help us find it than have us dig it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Motion to approve.
All right. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion among the boards? Seeing, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. TDC, Mr. Sun?
We've got one more.
Oh, one more? On drainage improvements on Lynn Drive.
Lynn Drive. Public Works has been working with the businesses on Lynn Drive for the past year or so in effort to alleviate the drainage and flooding issues. They believe they've come to a, a solution at a cost of about thirty-one thousand dollars. So we would ask that we appropriate those funds for the in-house drainage improvements, not to exceed thirty-one thousand dollars from the Public Works Maintenance and Road Repair Account.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is, one question, is that the, the road that is like a bowl?
I, I think that's one of the issues with it.
Yeah, because everything goes down to it. Okay, just, just wondered. All right, any more discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most closely signed, motion carries. All right. Mr. Sun?
Good morning, commissioners. Just a few updates from the TDC this morning. Our next TDC council meeting is scheduled for December first at nine o'clock at the Annex, so we're preparing that agenda for that council meeting. Couple of processes that are moving forward that you guys have been involved in, the strategic planning process that's moving along, and the public space design charrette process that's also moving along. And lastly, I think I told you at the last meeting, we had advertised the executive director position that is on the street. We're receiving applications and that will close on December eleventh. So other than that, everything's moving along quite nicely at the TDC.
Wonderful. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? Anyone in the audience have any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Our next item is a public hearing to request the approval of a resolution amending the FY 2015-16 budget to bring forward for the Walton County broadband initiative in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Davis?
Not, we need a motion over the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Would be Melissa would be my guess.
It would be Melissa.
Melissa's here if you need her, but basically...
He's got Rick is on this one, isn't he?
Yeah.
Okay. But we did discuss, we're moving the, the money forward, but we're, we're spending half this, this year and then half the following year.
So, and we're doing this now because we didn't anticipate this opportunity to enter to the agreements to provide the service. So this resolution will amend the general fund by bringing one million, three hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund's balance. The public hearing concerning this matter was approved at the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen board meeting.
So I have a question. Why are we moving the whole amount in there if we're only, if the two thousand fifteen, sixteen, if the two thousand sixteen, seventeen budget's going to include the seven fifty, why are we moving the whole thing in there? Why don't we just split it up and move it, move part of it in this year and part of it in next year?
Ms. Melissa, will you answer that question for us?
That would be an option, since the board, though, has signed the contract. This would lock in the funding and roll it forward as a project into next year, just like with a road project where you'd budget the whole thing, even if it's spanned. It rolled into the next year.
Okay. Yeah, because I was told that we had an option to fund 750 this year and 750 next year, which I thought was probably the way to do it. Instead of tying up 750 sitting in an account for a year. It makes sense to me to split it up into two budget years.
And, and that would be up to the, that would really be to the wishes of the board. It looked like the second payment would be early in fiscal year 17, so this would just lock in the funding and have it where it would just budget it as a project.
Right, and, well, still, I think, you know, even if it is a project, there's no use to have a 750 sit in a fund for a year, in my opinion. It could probably be, it could probably be invested to earn interest for a year. I mean, instead of sitting in a fund earning no interest, so that would be my, my recommendation, is that we split it to two, two funding. You can always amend the budget later on if something happens, but you can't, you know, let 750 sit in an account for a year. It's not, in my opinion, a very financially feasible thing to do.
Madam Chair, Ms. Melissa, even if it's unspent, it's still going to be drawing interest, will it not?
Yes, or it would still be in, in the accounts. This would really just, it, this would earmark it. It would not technically take it out of any of the accounts and put it somewhere else.
Any other discussion among the board? Seeing none. Anyone in the public like to have a comment on this particular project? All right, seeing none.
Move we close public comments, or?
Second.
We just did.
Second.
All right, do we have a second?
Actually, since this is a budget amendment, we have to vote.
We have to vote before we close it.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve is presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, now we close public comments.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all right.
Okay, and let me ask again. Where's that 1.350? What, what accounts, where's that coming from? The general fund? Is that coming from the general fund? I forgot. I was going to ask that question, I just forgot.
Yes, ma'am. $925,000 in unspent rollover from 2015 to 2016, and at the time that we did it, we, we knew there'd be about $425,000 coming in excess fees over the amount budgeted from the clerk's office. Since then, we've, when we call it the, the 925 in unspent rollover, that has resulted from the closing of the books of the different, a lot of it from the different constitutional offices have just remitted their excess fees, and that was about the amount of the total.
Okay.
And wasn't, I have my memory, wasn't the Sheriff's Department and the Clerk's Office going to help us with this project as well?
They are. The Clerk's Office, their piece was in the amount that they remitted back to the board. The Sheriff's Office has committed $50,000, so that would just come out of their, their budget. It's not included in any of, of what we're doing today. And $100,000 from the TDC, and that also is not included in what we're doing today. It would be in their budgets.
Okay, okay, thanks.
All right, we had a motion and a second to close the public.
Close the hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Commissioners, before I take my item, can we go back to the county of the copier maintenance contracts? They, the three contracts that are on the agenda for three separate offices, and we really don't need them to be without service and maintenance agreement. They are, they're actually drafted for 36 months. My suggestion would be, can we approve the three of them contingent upon the company accepting them for one year at the current prices? And that way, when we go out for bid, these folks will have service in the meantime. It's just an idea, if you want to do that.
It'll take a year?
And if you want to do it for six months, whatever term you want to choose. I just, 36 months is what's in here now. If it gets less than a year, they may want to negotiate on price, but yeah. They, they probably won't do it for six months, would be my guess.
I would ask that we try.
Yeah.
Be happy to, but if you can just approve them contingent upon that, then, and if they don't do that, then I'll come back to you.
Okay. Motion to ask them contingently to accept the current three that are under consideration for a six-month period.
Second.
Thank you.
Is that an addition to the original motion, or are you, are we considering this as a separate motion?
No, it's a separate motion.
Okay. Any discussion among the board?
This is just so that we can allow the time to get the RFP out there, get the quotes back, get them analyzed and presented to the board.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sure do. All right. Anyone in the public like to comment on that? Seeing none. Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The item I have under my time is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the amended grant of cross-access agreement between the county and Terramore Development. Commissioners, in your packet, there's a map that looks something like this, or looks like this, and essentially what is being asked of us is to move the cross-easement from the, what looks like kind of pinkish-yellowish location to the green location. This easement unfortunately is a cross-easement to nowhere, because Sandy K. Road, which is in between this parcel and the parcel to the immediate east, is now a private road, but we'd like to keep the cross-easement, and just in case in the future Sandy K. Road became a public road, we would have the ability to cross ease across to the other parcel, and the developer is just asking that we move it. It's kind of an odd shape the way it is now. If we can just move it to that green L shape, that's the purpose of the agreement.
Is that building, what is that building?
The, the building on this map, it's a proposed development. I think it's the Dollar General proposal.
I'm trying to figure out where that is.
Sandy K. Paradise Village area off of.
You know what Captain Dave's Restaurant is on Terramore Beach?
Captain Dave.
It's almost across the street from, a little bit, a little bit east of that.
Okay, okay.
All you're asking for right now is just the, the cross-easement, right?
Just to, a vote to approve the grant of the amended cross-easement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second. Is there any discussion among the board? Anyone in the public have a comment? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Meadows.
I'm sure I have something, but I can't think of what it is.
Well, Ronnie, you can come back later.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I don't have anything at this time.
I have nothing other than to remind people, this is our 26th annual hometown Christmas. The longest-running festival in North Walton County at least. It will be Saturday, and I know I've heard that there are two football games on Saturday. Minor teams, so come early, and you'll, you'll still get out to in order to enjoy the football games. It's at the fairgrounds. And other than that, Happy Thanksgiving. Ms. Cecilia.
On Saturday night, I attended a sports banquet at the community center, and it was packed, and it was just so exciting to see so many young boys and girls, and they just want to thank us for the, the effort and the things that we do for Harbors and Fields, so I accepted this really nice plaque on behalf of all of us and wanted to present it to our new chairman.
Oh.
She can hang it wherever she would like to. We will hang it in admin. How's that, so we all get to. And then the only other thing is have a really great Happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family. Try to turn off your cell phones. And I'm probably preaching to the choir, but anyway, thank you so much for all, all you do, staff. You're wonderful, and we look forward to a, a, a great and prosperous, prosperous New Year. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chapman.
Just a couple of things. I'd like to, on behalf of the board, congratulate the Walton Braves. They had a 10-0 regular season, didn't quite make it through the playoff rounds, but undefeated, and it's been a long time since the Walton High had a undefeated season. Congratulations to the coach and, and the players there, and I would like to wish everybody, staff, public, board members, a Happy Thanksgiving and a safe one.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank the board again for the support I received during the past 12 months, and to wish everyone out there, staff and the public, a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and we'll see you at the next meeting in December.
Very good. I will comment on, on your comment. It was so nice to see the whole county come together in support of, of the Braves. You know, signs were everywhere that day. There were blue and white balloons all over town and, and all the way down 331. It was nice to see us come together to, you know, to celebrate some of our youth. So, at this time, we have no citizens' requests, Mr. Jones? Okay. Then, further public comments. You may comment, anyone that'd like to come forward and comment on anything that was, that you would like to speak on. Each, we have 15 minutes set aside, and each individual will have three minutes. Does anyone like to make any comments at this time? Yes, Mr. Hudson, come forward. And you spell your name for the record, so you don't have to do it again this time.
For the record, my name is Bob Hudson, H-U-D-S-O-N. I'm the executive director of the Walton County Taxpayers Association. This is, in a way, I guess you could say, of a public records request. I know that we brought to the attention of this board an issue with the Road and Bridge Fund. And my understanding is, is that from talking to Wilmer, that there's going to be an item on the December 22nd agenda to deal with what is there, what might be there, what has been there, what has been. But I also am aware that Melissa has computed some financial information concerning what the county has spent on those roads, and the taxpayers' association would like to see those numbers at this time. Thank you.
All right, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we will take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back for our planning issues. Bad up here. All right, we are back in. Did you say resemble or resemble?
Resemble.
First, on our planning agenda, we have a legislative item. Mr. Dice.
Madam Chairman, we have one before that. It's really a, a plan for an update on what we're doing. A couple meetings ago, there were a couple of recommendations that were made by the board for, for planning, and I want to go there if I could with you real quick and kind of tell you where we are as far as status. First one was, it was discussed about the peer review process. We are continuing that as we go forward. Peer review is where planners come together, review projects together, review numbers together, and to ensure a complete and accurate review of, of all the projects and also all the calculations that go along with those projects, and we intend to move that forward. And we are looking for ways to tweak that, make that better as we go along. Also, we had discussed purchasing some software for planning. We have completed the RFP, and we did get responses back. We are going through that software, those responses now, and hope to be meeting with vendors to go over those submissions to make sure we get something that fits our needs with that. Also, on your, in your packet, you have also an RFQ that was done to update the transportation element. I know we had discussed portion of fair share and potentially impact fee. When that RFQ that's in the, in your packet, we'll actually look at that and analyze which one is beneficial to the county, and so we'll move forward with that with the board's direction. Number four is one that I passed out an update to you earlier. It has been discussed many times and recently about having the Conference of Plan Land Development Code looked at for some inconsistencies and also removing some redundant language and so forth. Trying to improve that document so they work very well together, but also even things like in the Land Development Code, we have different terms defined different ways, and there's a lot of things we could do, I believe, to help get that document in better shape, so it's easier to understand, easier to implement, and also easier for the public to use. And in your, we passed out was a, sort of some, a draft scope of work that we'd be looking at doing for that. With that, there is one item that, that I know at the meeting, we discussed zoning, and we will be potentially asking this consultant to analyze that for us and give us some feedback on what's the best way to do that if we were to move forward with that. Also, it was discussed about staff training. Right now, we, we implement a mentoring program. We have new planners come in, and we will assign that person to work with one of our more experienced planners. Also, we put together recently a procedures manual for more, some of the office staff as far as, you know, procedurally how we process things. We'll move forward with that, and again, we'll try to look at those and try to update those as necessary to move forward. And also, the, the last item we'd like to update the board on is something that's been discussed for a little bit now, is trying to get the planning staff into one location. I think this is, that would be a benefit to us, having one location for the planning staff. We can all be together. I think we can maximize efficiencies with that. Having everybody there together, and we'll have plenty of, of, of staff there to do things probably a little more quickly and more efficiently, and so we're, we're looking at that and evaluating potentially what our space needs are for that. We do have a, quite a few number of people who work in planning, both in the south end and in the north end, and so we're looking at, evaluating what our needs are, what our space needs be, be for that, and how that could be arranged. And so, that's just sort of an update. If any questions are, I'd be glad to answer any questions regarding that.
One thing, Wayne, as far as your, your last number there, six, under one roof. Have y'all considered where a possible site may be? Is it strictly in the south end, the north end, or is it midway?
I, I think right now, I mean, there, there's been some potential sites that have been, but nothing, nothing, I think, has been certain. I'll defer to Larry on that.
Commissioner, our, we've identified a location in Freeport that will, would serve our needs well. We certainly haven't done anything other than begin looking at that potential. What, what we've asked Wayne and his staff to do is to look at that location and determine a layout that would work, and before we bring it back for your consideration, we will have, it's, it's new space. It's never been developed or built out. We will get our construction folks to go down and take a look and get a build-out cost, wrap it all into the rental fees, and so when we, if, if and when we bring that if we determine that is feasible, we'll certainly bring it back for your consideration and, and have all those particulars lined out.
All right, well, my concern would be it wouldn't, in my opinion, needs to be pretty centralized, if you will, because you've got people from the south end and also from the north end of the county would need to not make it a whole-day trip down there and back. And the consideration may be, even if it was to end up in Freeport, there would be some staff, minimal staff, one, two, whatever it may, y'all decide it is, at both locations, maybe up here in the Feniac and also across the bay, that could take the stuff in and then bring it up for y'all's vetting or whatever else needs to be done.
And, and Commissioner, we, we can certainly look at that. Right now, we're looking more of, of space needs and how that, what, what our total space needs would be with conference rooms and those kind of things. But, but we can certainly consider that, look at that, and try to make, work that into our entire system.
And part of that process will be accessibility and convenience to the public and how we best serve them, but.
And, and Ms. Chairman, Madam Chairman, I could also add this, another aspect of this too. One of the things that was in our RFP for our planning software was to do basic electronic submissions, which would also likely cut down the need for, you know, in-person visits. I mean, there will always be that need, but, but that's also something that we could, that will help mitigate some of that, I believe, and so as we move forward with that, we'll, we'll try to get that implemented in line, which would, which would help in that regard.
Good.
And we're also, you know, I know that Ms. Skipper's been looking for more space that would maybe free up that building so that we wouldn't have to build anything else at that location for, for a while. And you'll see right now, there's a real need, and I've been in it before, and it's like y'all are so proud, and it's hard to have any private conversations about your project. There's just not even a real place to do it, so I'm here with an.
Yes, ma'am, it is, and, and right now, we have some positions that are open that we're filling, so we're not even at, at, at full capacity right now, and it does, it does get, get quite busy down there, and, and one of our goals would be to try to create an area for the public to be, and also the area for the, for the, for the work to be done and so forth, and so that's one of our, our goals with that. But we, you know, but we are right now just evaluating space needs and how that would be set up in a potential new location.
And I think it's so timely, because in lieu of what we're predicted to see in the next five years, we, yeah, we really need to be ready for all this.
And I think all this is kind of what, what they're underpinning, is trying to provide the best service we can to the county as far as efficiency of reviews and timeliness of reviews, thoroughness of reviews, and that's what we're looking at primarily, is how can we do this to make this, make it better, to make sure we're, we are addressing the, the concerns, and we are thoroughly reviewing projects and also getting them done quickly, and also being accessible to the public for public records and those kind of things.
So, Wayne, would this, this would be planning and code and building?
Planning and code primarily. I know right now, in the south office, there are one person, there's a person from GIS that's, that's in that office, and also two, three people from the building department.
GIS and building, okay. And then, and then are y'all gonna, are, have you advertised for the environmental person yet that y'all have?
We have not yet. We are, we are going through the, the actual job description right now, and we should have that done. We have advertised for the planning assistant, the planning tech position. I think we're interviewing for those next week, I believe, and then hopefully very quickly after that, we'll have the planning, the environmental planner position advertised.
Okay.
And we've probably already thought about having the engineer, I mean, if it's not feasible to have one there full-time, you might do a rotating basis as we move forward with having an engineer at least one day a week, or?
That's something that we, we can, that's, we've kind of talked about just generally. Nothing formalized with that. I know there's been some discussion about, you know, which one is more beneficial to have, the consulting engineers or have the in-house engineers? The cost with those two proposals, and those are the things we're still, we're, we're, right now, we're evaluating to see which one is, would be in the best interest of the county. we're evaluating to see which one is, would be in the best interest of the county.
So, Wayne, for me, on item three, Commissioners, on the compare and contrast to prop share and impact fees, would you like to see a, us develop an RFQ, formal one to bring back for your consideration?
Say that again.
Yeah. Item three, we were talking about the transportation element, and we're currently using prop fair share. There was some discussion about perhaps converting that to impact fees.
I think that's in their, I think that's in their RFP, scope of services for this planning company to look at.
If you get it right, Paul.
No, no, sir. It, it, it is separate. The, the RFQ is separate for that.
Is it?
Yes, ma'am. It's, I mean, it's, it's still done in the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code. I think what we're asking for with the, with number three, the prop fair share, is to ask, is to allow us to go forward and evaluate the transportation element of the Conference of Plan, which includes that in there. And, and that, there's an RFQ that's, that's in your packet. The RFP for the Land Development Code, the Conference of Plan, that's such a draft, and we would like to bring a more, once we get that through legal and so forth, that one we'll bring back to the board. The RFQ, I believe, has already been approved by the board some time ago, I believe, so...
Okay, yeah. I thought that was in here for some reason.
I think I heard somebody say, yes, we definitely would like to look at that, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that to the next phase and step and get it back to you for your approval or consideration.
Any other questions? Thank you. Very good update.
Commissioners, the first item under legislative items is a request to amend the development order for Hardee's. I'll ask Brian Underwood to come up and go over that with you, and the reason for the amendment for the development order.
So, I'm sorry, Wayne. So, this, 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 section one to scope of services and such, you want us to comment on this?
Yes, ma'am. If you don't mind, if I get, if you guys could look at and give me some comments, that's just a draft, and, you know, what we'd like to do is bring it back to the board and get it formally, have it formally reviewed by the board, and then...
Okay.
And have, have Mark and his office look at it, and then, then come back with it to get that finalized.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. The current proposals in regard to the final order that was approved for the Hardee's of Santa Rosa Beach project back on September 22nd. The project analysis identified a $94,020 proportionate fair share impact fee associated with the traffic impacts. Subsequently, the Florida Department of Transportation has requested some operational improvements to US Highway 98, and specifically, that would include adding a turn lane into the proposed Hardee's site. The engineering cost estimate for that turn lane is identified at $131,643, and that amount has been reviewed by the Walton County Public Works Engineering, and they are supporting the request to amend the prop fair share finding of the final order so that the improvements to be made by the developer would offset the proportionate fair share, and that would be summarized in the amended final order.
Right.
Is it an equal? Is it an equal?
It's actually, the road improvements that are recommended by DOT actually exceed the prop fair share that was documented in the final order.
Okay.
Is DOT participating in the sharing of that cost, or is it all being passed on to the developer?
I'm not, I'm not certain. We do have Scott Rutherford here, who's a project engineer.
I would guarantee the developers paying for it, but I, I wouldn't swear to it.
Matt Carver for the Planning Department. DOT is requiring a developer to fund the entire cost of the improvement to serve their development.
Thank you.
They did, they did every, they do that every, yeah.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen?
Madam Chairman, just one question for clarity, if you don't mind. You, you mentioned a figure of ninety-some thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
And then a hundred and thirty-one thousand, I believe. Is the one thirty-one in addition to the ninety-one, or in lieu of?
It's in lieu of.
So, it'll be a total of one thirty-one.
And it's to be paid by the developer for the improvement.
Do the developer then pays that to the state, or does that come to the county for us to?
I think it's direct costs to be incurred through the construction specifically of the operational improvement.
That's what it's going to cost development.
That's right.
Yeah. All right.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion in two seconds. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is quasi-judicial.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, anyone who anticipates testifying on any matter before the board on quasi-judicial nature, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
And Commissioners, have you had any exporte contacts regarding the item on the quasi-judicial docket?
No.
Seeing none, any objections to any of the notices that have been provided? Seeing none, Mr. Dice.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Madam Chairman, the next item is number two on your agenda. It's a request to approve Alice Beach Block L plat. This is a request to plat twelve significant lots in Alice Beach, which is, which has a traditional neighborhood development designation. They've, in lieu of their plat fee, they have, many years ago, dedicated land. I believe that background is in your, in your packet for that, and so there would be no rec plat fee required here because of the dedication many years ago in lieu of that. But again, we ask for approval. Tim Brown's here to ask, answer any questions if you have any.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, does anyone have any question?
You take comments from here.
I'm getting there. Does the board have any questions? All right, does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions? Seeing none? Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion in second to approve. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I had a question, and I wasn't quick, quick enough.
Do you have a question, sir?
Well, the only thing is, the motion should include any conditions of approval in there, and I just want to make sure.
To approve the planning's conditions associated in the planning's...
Re-second. Second.
Okay, re-second.
Re-second, okay.
All right. We'll take the vote again. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
Second.
Is that correct? We've got a lot of past chairmen, so really...